Religion is the flag of the United States of America. A truly republican, religious stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve agenda, second.
Kate, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements? So go into public comment. Is anyone here to speak in their public comment? Or anything not on the agenda? Any good questions? Alright, keep those public comment. Consent agenda? Do you have anything else consent they would like removed or requested?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Kate, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
You have no public hearings, so go into general business.
Mayor members of the council, tonight we are giving a presentation on the preliminary budget. Normally this would, based on past discussions, this would be a consent agenda item at this point. But we believe that there may be some discussion tonight, so we put it under general business. I'm gonna, I know this will surprise you, but I'm gonna keep this relatively short. And really discuss changes from the previous draft to this one. However, I always like going over the main slides, I'll just whip through them. That the budget's policy document allocates finite resources, it's directive to staff. Tonight, we're gonna review the assumptions, changed assumptions in the budget. We're going to present to you the estimated tax impact. We'll only walk through the preliminary budget. If you guys have questions on specific elements of the budget, we can pull it up and walk through it, otherwise I'm not planning to do that. We're looking for any final refinements for adoption of preliminary budget, but it does need to be adopted tonight. So whatever we do, if we make any changes, we will have to do that on the fly tonight. So that, so that we can get that in. Kelly can get that in on?
Thirty.
Thirty. Like to always go through the rules of thumb, accept current likely future realities, be realistic in the assumptions, match sources and uses, avoid kicking the can unless it's specifically part of a strategy, take advantage of opportunities, and maintain flexibility. So here's the long list of changes from the previous draft. There we go. And the discussion at the last meeting, the only change that was made was that the council had reduced the projected perm activity from 35 to 25 homes of their equivalent. And that roughly had a .9% impact, or change in the estimate tax impact upwards. Now, knowing that there's likely to be discussion tonight on that, we've prepared the comparisons. So let's say we went back to 35. It would be less levy of $21,000, about which would give us 28.8% tax impact, levy would be at 9.4. If the council chooses to split the baby, so to speak, at 30 permits, we'd be looking at about 10,000 difference, we'd be at a 9.2% tax impact and a 9.7% levy. And Kelly, being as awesome as she is, she has resolutions here tonight reflecting both of those options.
Does she have a resolution for the option of 25?
That is the one that is in your because that was the last direction from council. I do want to remind the council that there are pieces to the budget at this point which are unknown. And right now, we have contingency at 3%. COLA adjustment is not included in that, that still has yet to be negotiated. I think it's a fair assumption that that will be somewhere in the area of half of the COLA or upwards, leaving us with only about a 1.5% COLA for other items. We have not received our 2023 state fire rate, so it's estimated, so we're hoping it won't be too far off. Insurance costs are, for benefits is estimated, we're hoping that we'll, that won't be too far off and hopefully on the good side. Right now, we do not have an answer to the timing cost of transition for an alternate IT solution moving away from Savage, which we anticipate will probably take place early next year. We have some rough numbers and we hope we're close, but we really don't know yet because we haven't, we're not, we haven't quite, we have proposals but haven't interviewed anybody and defined a final set of services. We have a special assessment contract at the county assessor's office. We're just doing the plugin from previous years, but there's a chance it may go up. Commissioner? We don't know because we haven't seen it yet. So right now, based on direction from the last council meeting, we're at a 9.7% estimated tax impact. And the levies at 10.12%. Or an increase of $285,000. So at this point, will stand for questions or further direction from the council?
Hypothetically, let's say Bryce gets his way and we say a 25 permits.
Yep.
We can always change that and move back up to 35 because it's impacting revenues when we do the final budget, correct?
Absolutely, and I think, I don't want to put words in Bryce's mouth, but I think you argue that that would be a conservative approach because we can do exactly that in case we get into a pinch or we need a little more flexibility when we get to the final budget.
Yeah, that's exactly it. I mean, well, just to say, that was my main point, it's preliminary. Right? We have five outstanding assumptions that we still don't have numbers back on. And we can always, when we do the final budget, can always adjust when we get that information.
Good thing we made that change.
Yeah.
I was the common denominator where I had a meeting with the two of you. And then the last council meeting, I had a meeting with Bryce and Josh. And I was just like, I'm gonna get in trouble.
I feel real strongly that it should be a higher number, but for the purposes of passing the preliminary budget, we finally can look forward.
Is that a direction from council?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. Then if that's the case, you could move forward passing the resolutions as presented on the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Kate, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
That was a lot less exciting than you were expecting.
Just a little bit.
Don't want to, nor to come. Next item on general business would be the liquor license for Firehouse Grill, which I understand is the only reason it's out here is because Kate would have to abstain. I don't think staff has any report or presentation. Is anyone comfortable just making a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve resolution to 2-6-3.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
One abstaining.
Anyone abstaining? Alright. And you are?
I am.
Okay, so we're in the reports?
Under reports, Mr. Mayor.
Administration?
So we don't plan on giving an extensive presentation of the T H C at all. The council's familiar with the topic, the council members that aren't here at that meeting are familiar with the topic. Basically, at this point, we're looking for direction from the council on what they would like to do, if anything, on this particular topic. It would be good to note that every city in the county, including the county that passed moratorium, a couple of cities are willing to go forward directly, looking at some form of licensing. Other cities are just stepping back and waiting in preface to develop a little bit more. Around the state, though, there are some cities that are doing nothing, they're just sitting back and waiting to see where, if the legislature makes any additional changes, they'll respond at that time. I think we are in a position that if we do do moratorium, and I'm not necessarily recommending that we should, but if we do, the last time we checked with our local businesses that were eligible to sell, nobody was selling. Although they do, and when we get into the process of deciding what we do, there are businesses that clearly indicated they would like the option to be able to do in the future. Although nobody at this point said yes, we're absolutely going to, they would like the option to in the future, would like to have further discussions on that particular issue. So at this point, unless Renee has anything specific to add, we're just really looking for direction from the council.
Bryce, you want to go first?
I guess when it comes down to the county's moratorium, does that include all cities or does it include just the townships?
It's just townships.
Just townships. Okay.
Does anyone want to see the presentation?
No.
No? Alright, good. So
No offense, yeah.
So I I talked to Bryce earlier about this and I, so I know where he's at, I know if he knows where I'm at, we'll have that discussion, but we're almost dominating the conversation. Kate, Amanda, do you have any opinions either way?
I have no thought.
I would say let's do a moratorium.
You'd do pro-moratorium? So my argument against doing a moratorium is I feel it's really, well, quite frankly, I feel it's unnecessary. I think, well, as was just reported, there's no businesses in town that are eligible to sell, are actively trying to sell. I feel, I don't want to put a moratorium on anything unless we really have to. And I don't know that we really have to in this case, I think it sends a bad message to anyone looking to do business within our community that we have moratoriums on certain businesses. That doesn't mean we never have, that doesn't mean we never will. But I also feel strongly that this, the confusion is going to be sorted out for the next couple of months in St. Paul. And if it's not, and if it's not something we're comfortable with, we could revisit a moratorium at that point if we so chose to. So in other words, we're not gaining anything by putting a moratorium on this. If anything, I think we could create an impression that we're trying, it's just another small step in us being considered restrictive community of businesses wanting to come in here. We're having a strip mall that was under construction right now and there was, there's potential that some that a business was going to go in there and it was going to be selling the legal products. I think it's Delta Nine or I'm not exactly sure what they're called, but that might be a little bit a different story, but I think right now by doing a moratorium, we're doing something to prevent nothing. No, I just don't like that.
So Mr. Mayor, everything you said is true, I don't disagree with it, but I have, we have to point out that it's not just brick and mortar. You could have food trucks come in. In fact, at I mean, best over in Jordan, they had a food truck come in that was doing enhanced seltzers and edibles and things like that. So just not offering an opinion, just pointing out it's not just brick and mortar sales, it can be pop-up sales and food truck sales that potentially could be selling as well.
And they're legal products that they're coming, that they're selling?
Yes, but there's no
I know.
Assuming that it's all, assuming that what they're selling is legal, yes.
Right. I don't, I don't think putting a moratorium in says that we're against having the products be sold. I think the purpose of the moratorium is to say the legislature did a really terrible job of putting together regulations that made for the safe consumption, sale, everything else in order to put those products out there. So I don't think we're putting any message to businesses that say, we don't want you here. I think we're trying to be responsible and saying we're okay with this, but there needs to be other things put in place before we're okay with this.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand the point, but I still disagree. I think we're trying to solve the problem, it's not a problem.
So why would we be reactive then? In the case that, what if a problem does occur and now we're being reactive towards it?
What would be the problem to occur?
So if everybody else says no, how easy is it for everyone to come here and say, alright, we're gonna set up shop here now because we can't do it anywhere else?
Which is legal for that to do. I would be, I would be open, I'd be open to meeting in the middle on some form of licensing process. I don't necessarily like that, but
And I don't think there's anything that says we can't do the licensing part of it. The moratorium just says, let's pump the brakes.
Right.
And prepare for that step.
So
Because in the meantime, it's just open season.
But we want commerce to come to town, you can go just up 35 to the vape shop right on County Road 70 and you can buy THC edibles. So anything we do to restrict that happening here is just simply making us more restrictive than any other city that's right next to us. And I just, I don't think we have to do that. I don't think we win anything by putting a moratorium.
I would love the police chief's feedback on this. I would, I would love to hear your thoughts.
Part of the public safety right now concerned by you seeing a lot of moratoriums, Your Honor, is that it is, you say somebody could pop up, there's no way to tell if it's legal or not. We, law enforcement, public safety, if somebody comes in and starts selling what looks like a legal product and then a whole bunch of people get sick from it, or it's actually illegal, stuff made in China, or
Laced.
Has a higher, higher percentage, we just have no way of finding that out. So it's really, since it's so new, you can't tell if it's illegal or not because we have no way at a state level of testing the gummies, testing the seltzers to see if it is legal. You could have counterfeit. And like alcohol, we have ways of testing it, cigarettes have stamps, there's part of the thing is we don't know what we don't know. So with a moratorium, at least you can be safe and protect right now until something, they fix some of the testing and the regulations on the products. And I think that's where the concern is from us. I'm not saying to do it or not, I was the one who conducted the study. No one is looking to do it right now, but you could then be targeted if you're the only one in Scott County without it. People could start coming here, three, four, or five shops. And there's just no way to find out if they're selling illegal gummies or legal gummies.
My biggest concern is that somebody comes to town like a food truck and starts selling these products. And like you said, the fact that you can't test them, my problem is, is that drugs are mixed with other drugs all the time. All the time. And marijuana is not excluded, THC is not excluded from that. And so, you know, there's, there's not any possession regulations with it, there's nothing. And so you get some kid that gets his hand on this and now it's laced with one other other drug and they got it from Elko New Market. Man, that's a, that's great PR for our city.
That's, I mean, that's your point, but I think I would be okay with offending the fact that it wasn't Elko New Market that sold the drugs.
That's not gonna matter.
It's not gonna matter when every other city puts a moratorium on it and we sat back and say, well, it's not a problem now, so we're gonna let them do it.
Well, I just
I don't think we're gonna agree here.
No, I don't think we're gonna agree.
We're gonna go around in circles.
We are.
We're, I'm definitely don't think that's gonna happen.
Can I get a reminder on, we put a moratorium in place. It is in place for a period of time or for one year or
Up to one year. Typically what you do is you maximize the time to give yourself the greatest flexibility, but when you don't need it anymore, you then lift the moratorium once you feel you've got what you need in place.
Well, I think that would give us time to do research. Research and then look at a licensing component. Though I don't think the goal is to say never happen here, but it gives us the opportunity to like, for one, have the legislature fix their mistakes. And two, at the same time.
I don't think there's a lot of hope that the legislature is gonna accomplish that.
I feel, well, I feel like there is a lot of pressure.
Yeah, I think there's
There's a lot of pressure.
Appears to be bipartisan support because of the testing and law enforcement component, public safety component to it. And a lot of the cities that do allow it have a pretty strict licensing process already that they're able to do it under as well. So I mean, some of the, some of the cities that have it are bigger cities, they have people that can regulate it, they have people testing it, they have, I mean, compliance testing and stuff like that that we don't have.
To me, there's no reason why we can't do a moratorium. And at the same exact time that that moratorium goes into effect, we start looking at what the ability is to put licensing in place.
So I could, I could go along with the short-term moratorium, whether it be four months or six months or something like that. That'd be as far as I can come. If I call Andrew in all the comments. Good leadership. I'm just kidding.
Let's look back at some previous meetings where I compromised. Once in a while, I gotta put my foot down, and this is one of those things where I just feel like very passionate about the fact that I just don't want people to get sick and get hurt because people do stupid crap with drugs and mixing them and, and stuff like that. And I want there to be something in place that protects the public in that case. And if it happens elsewhere, we can't control that, but if we can do something here, let's do it.
I think you can apply that same logic to any type of bottle sale of any sort of, any product. This just happens to have a lot of, I guess, attention behind it, so
But I mean, there's laws and regulations on other things, you know?
It's true.
And this happens to be something that has changed recently and with that change comes these issues that we gotta face and address.
Kate, what do you think?
Um, I, I'm with Bryce. I, I would like to see the moratorium. I think that it gives us time to do licensing. Everything else around here you need a license for. I don't feel that THC should just be able to pop in here and sell away without having a license. I would agree with Bryce, there needs to be a moratorium.
I'm okay being alcoholic.
Today, you're alcoholic.
What, what a length of a moratorium?
I would like the full year.
Really?
Because then if, then if, first, God forbid, something doesn't happen, we have that year to get our ducks in the row.
Well, and I feel like we can
We can lift it at any
We can all lift it at any time.
The same time.
We could lift it two months from now.
But if it's six months, we can just extend it another six months.
Are you allowed to do that?
Yes, but I think you would probably present it in a place that we've been doing for many years. So we can do it if it's not too long.
And as soon as you put it in place, spend six months, you can immediately extend it for another six months? But you're thinking things are going to happen faster than six months?
I think so, but You know, you might want to still look at zoning issues as well, so there could be some other things that you want to review. And you might want to tailor it, whatever you're doing, you get down the road and you find out what the legislature then comes up with. And then you've got to kind of do what your plans would fit, what their requirements are.
And then I think we also have to think about our staff timing too. What's in the pipeline for them? Six months, does that give them enough time to, to do what we're asking as far as licensing and so forth? And do everything else that's in their long list of things to do?
Well, if it's not done, we just, we just get seven moratoriums.
And you would be, you would be willing to do that?
I'd be willing to revisit the conversation.
What if we had the moratorium for a year with a goal of six-month completion of these? Because Andrea already has like, I don't want to call it cookie cutter, but that's like
Boilerplate?
Yeah, like, which is like, you know, draft language that would need to be reviewed. And I, I don't know the time that would take for staff. But then we don't have that extra step in staff naming to do the paperwork to extend the moratorium.
There can't be that much people, it's just a resolution.
You're talking about, you have who's better failing with license, correct?
Yes, that's
Okay.
So, so that would, so that would address that we would have some means of regulating it, but it wouldn't address the issue, some of the issues that Bryce and Chief brought up with regards to how it's regulated from like a
Residential neighborhood to
Or the zoning aspect of it.
Or even the manufacturer and, and testing and all types of items would not be addressed by the license. We would just be saying that we can come into your business and, you know, check to see if it looks like it might be compliant, could be like doing cigarette testing, except cigarette industry has its own set of compliance and testing and everything, just like foods and things do this. It just doesn't happen to. There are cities that are doing that. I believe the city of Craig is taking that approach and it will be forward. And I believe one other city is, is also looking at that approach as well. I believe the Sage is looking to do that. If you took a more slow approach, there's a number of resources that are out there that we'd be able to take advantage of. One, leading in those cities, as you know, Josh actually sits on a work group of leading in those cities that's working on issues for the legislature to try and resolve in the upcoming session. Scott County already has its own working group to be doing, to be doing it on a more local basis, trying to figure out how it's addressed locally. The other element of this is that the legislature might not get it worked out. Everybody's like, oh, it'll happen in January. If it's any sort of legislation and stuff, nothing ever happens in January. Most stuff actually happens in about late May. So we would actually be looking at over six months just for the legislature probably to resolve it. I would, and if it goes to special session, it could be more. Now, if they do get on it as a top priority and they get it cleaned up early in the session and that gives us direction on how we need to structure whatever we're doing locally, we can be much less than six months. And if that does happen, more than likely, the league, the league attorneys, all the attorneys that work for cities around the state, there will probably be any numerous examples or a standard template that we can use for how we would approach it at that time.
So if we need to extend a moratorium, how much work goes into that?
It, extending it isn't really that hard.
Is it, it's simply one document or a resolution?
It's a resolution.
So it would not take staff any real time to extend it?
No. It's just a question, do you push it out or you blow it back is, is really the, the difference.
And rather go short. If the three of you decide you want to go a year, I'm honestly kind of disappointed, but I'm not gonna raise the wheel above it. So you guys know where I'm at.
I'm staying with the year, sorry.
I'm staying with the year.
Sounds good. So we'll move on. Anything else under reports? Or anything else under administration?
No, Mr. Mayor. The next item would be the engineer.
So tonight I have with me Seth Peterson. I think most of you, maybe Bryce, do you know Seth?
I don't know.
Seth heads up our environmental services department at Old Mike. Headed up the design, construction of the water plant. And we'll be doing the, most of the presentation tonight on this water. The, actually the slideshow and the memo that's in your packet were prepared by Megan Brockman. And so she's here tonight to support us as well. And so with the introductions, there's only one thing I want to make sure you keep in mind throughout this presentation. You're gonna see a lot of graphs and charts. They're mostly centered on the idea of our max day demand, not our average day demand. Especially when we introduce a large user or doubling of that user. The charts are focused on that big day, hot weather, lots of watering going on or some fire, or something going on when we're using three or four times as much water as we normally do. So all this stuff that you're gonna see on an average day is no big deal. But we do have to plan for those max days because they do happen. We don't know how big or when, but I think it's an important thing to keep in mind. Maybe the charts look a little less scary in terms of timing and when you have to do things, keeping that in mind. So if you want me to, I'll just drive for you.
Yep, please drive. So what we're gonna talk tonight is reevaluating the water system based on a significant new user and the potential and the future growth coming. And so as we look at your water system, we break it into three things. Supply, that's your wells. Your storage, that's your towers and treatment, that's the water treatment. So we're looking at all those three components. They all need to work together to supply water for the city, it looks like. As we look at this, we look at, current is in the red, so those are current populations. And in the blue are the projected populations based on your comp planning. Why populations are important? Because from there, then that's how we determine. We look at what past flows have been. As you extend out those populations, then we look at what the future flows will be. We look at an average day demand, so that's your average day over the entire year. You look at all the water used in a year divided by 365 days, that's your average day demand. And max day demand is a calculated figure. We know what the max days are, so there's a, there's a peaking factor between the average day and max day. And so what we need to meet out there is the maximum day demand. We need to be able to provide water, have enough water in the system to be able to meet those max day demands as we go out into the future. Another thing we typically look at, as you see, we go up to 2040, you're like, well, why? We typically look at about a 20-year span. That's a typical design rate for eight water systems. So, next slide. So, next slide. Uh, so the water supply, there are three wells. Uh, they're listed up here at their capacity, uh, 850 gallons a minute or 1,000 gallons a minute. Um, no emergency power at each one of the wells. Next slide.
Except well four.
Except, oh, yeah, except well four has emergency power. Thank you, Rich. Um, and so this is where the graphs, and you're going to start to see these graphs. They all start to look similar, so we'll spend a little time on this one. Um, and this is just looking at, uh, the maximum day versus your current supply. Uh, and so this is just looking at the population as you go out. And as you can see, the blue line is the firm capacity. Firm capacity is you take your largest well out of service. So that means you'd only have two wells working. The orange line, I think that's orange, uh, is the upper line and that's your total capacity. So that's all three wells, uh, uh, meeting or, uh, running. Uh, in year 2030, that's when you exceed or you hit that firm capacity. So at that point in 2030 is when you'd need, uh, an additional well water source. Uh, Rich, you can go to the next slide. And then now this is when we start looking at having this potential significant user coming into the system. Uh, there are two scenarios we talk about, scenario one and scenario two. Scenario one is the user starts in 2023 and then either that user expands or another user comes in at the same capacity at the end of 2024. So you see a jump in 2023 up where we almost meet the demand and then exceed it, uh, in 2024. Um, and again, firm capacity is just two of the wells, uh, out of the three.
Uh, is it safe to think about firm capacity as basically a safety factor?
It is a safety factor, yep. And that's typically how they, the Department of Health asks us to look at water systems. Um, you know, you may have a well down for some, for some maintenance, uh, a motor goes, who knows what happens with it? So we always try to look at a firm capacity, assuming all the wells are there, you have them, they're available to use. And I'm sure at times all the wells have been running to meet, uh, different demands out there, but you do also have that third well. It is there for you to use. Uh, this is scenario two. So, uh, scenario two is the new user comes on, the big user comes in in 2023, but either another user comes in or they expand, and that doesn't happen until 2028. So it just kind of lengthens that time period out there when you would, uh, exceed things. So again, you still need a well in 2024, but it pushes out when you exceed the, the, the total current supply demand to 2035. Uh, so with the water supply, the conclusion here with, with the wells, so that's what we're talking about. With no new users, you need a new well by 2030. Um, and both for scenario one and scenario two, you're going to need a new well by 2024. And again, this is all matching, looking at those populations, they're matching the comprehensive plan. So if you grow slower than that, some of this may go out farther. If you go faster than that, you'll have to do it sooner than that, also.
Probably not this one, even if you flatten that projection for population to maybe reflect more recent historical averages, I think you're still looking at a well in 2024.
I agree. So storage, we have three, actually, storage. We have two towers in the air. The Elko Tower has 150,000 gallons, New Market Tower, 250,000 gallon capacity. There's a clear well, so that's an in-ground storage tank at the water treatment facility, uh, just shy of 500,000 gallons. That comes to storage in the air because we have a backup generation there and the pumps to deliver it in. So it acts just like, uh, storage in the air. So, uh, just under 900,000 gallons of capacity.
And just a, a quick note, the right now, the Elko and New Market sides cannot cross connect. So the Elko Tower serves the Alco side of the, of the system. The New Market side serves the New Market side. There is a valve in place that can allow them to connect. It is not currently operational and there is not plans to make it operational in the future as of now due to various pressure concerns. Um, so that's why you'll notice that total may not totally add up. That's because we were assuming that Elko Tower is not accessible for the New Market portion of the system.
The underground storage that Seth mentioned can be pumped to either Elko or New Market systems.
So again, this is a, a similar table than before. So this is looking at, and, and we will, when we look at storage, so before we're looking at maximum day with, with, uh, water supply with the wells, with storage, we typically look at the average day. So we want to be able to have the average day, uh, met with our storage requirements. So as you can see here, with just no new user, we're looking out to 2030, 33 before we need a new tower. This is with the new user, scenario one, so you have the first jump in 2023, then the second jump in 2024. You can see you exceed it, uh, in 2023. So we will not have, uh, enough storage to meet average day demand at this time period in, uh, with the new user in scenario one. And you'll see the same type of thing in scenario two, if you go to the next slide, Rich. Uh, same type of thing, even though it's extended out a little bit, but still, uh, 2023, you're exceeding your storage requirements. So again, uh, no new user, you need new storage by 2033. Uh, with either one of these scenarios, uh, scenario one or two, you need new storage by 2023. So another, this is a key item along with water supply. Looking at both water supply and storage are going to be critical items to be, uh, moving forward with, uh, in the future. We'll talk about that in a few minutes.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
There are other reasons, uh, to put storage in the air. So for example, our system, the area we're looking at serving potential big users, the most likely spot's going to be out by the freeway, uh, in fact, on the other side of I-35. So you've got a very long, single pipe hanging out there. And you may recall not that long ago, we talked about how water gets tired after a long trip in a pipe and the pressure drops and drops and drops. Putting a tower somewhere out that direction really makes that go away because that distance that water has to travel at a high speed is much shorter. So for geographic reasons and pressure maintenance and pressure evenness and fire flows, a tower would be very helpful for that, not, not just to have the water in the air, which is also a benefit.
So treatment is the final component of your water system. Uh, there's kind of four main components. We, we have the aeration as it comes in, it gets aerated. Uh, that's for iron and manganese removal. That's what we're doing with the water treatment facility. The detention tank allows some of those chemical reactions to happen. The filters are really the workhorse of your water treatment facility. That's where you're filtering out those particulates of iron and manganese. And then from there, they go into that reservoir and clear well to be pumped out into distribution system, either the Elko side or the New Market side. Uh, and so you can see each one of these has a certain capacity with them. Um, and there are certain choke points within your facility. And so if you go to the next slide, Rich, um, and, and as I mentioned, the filters can be run at different capacities. And so the bottom line, the purple line is running that at, uh, two gallons per minute per square foot. The green line, the middle line is two and a half gallons a minute per square foot. And three gallons a minute per square foot is the upper line, um, for periods of time. And we're going to do some stress testing out at your facility, uh, to look at how much we can push. We know two gallons a minute, it should be no problem. Two and a half, I think we'll feel pretty comfortable with. Can we get to three and do we still get the treatment performance that we want? And so we're going to do some testing out, out at the facility to verify that. But you can see what that does. If you can get up to three gallons a minute, uh, per square foot, you can see that you can get all the way out to 2035 with, uh, meeting the max day demands with, uh, just no new user. If you go to the next slide, and again, you can see what happens here is we have the new user. Remember, this is in 2023 and then in 2024, again, there's that jump. If we can get to two and a half, which I feel very comfortable with that, you know, we're, we're going to be okay there. Uh, but you're going to need some additional treatment capacity in the future. And at three gallons a minute per square foot, we're also doing, uh, okay there. So some capacity is already there in your, in your water treatment facility, unlike in some of the other scenarios with water supply and storage. Next slide, Rich? And this is scenario two, and again, this just lengthens it out. And again, you can see by going up, uh, capacity of your filters, you get, uh, much more, uh, capacity out there. So you do have some time with your water treatment facility. Summary here, again, in scenario one, would you look at capacity increasing in 2024? No new user, obviously, that's way out in 2035. And in scenario two, you'd be looking at 2028, uh, for doing improvements to the water treatment facility. Next slide.
There's a little bit of a mismatch between the 2024 figure when you would want that, supposing a big user came in, and when you can actually achieve it. We do have some flexibility there because the population is maybe a little more aggressive than, than actual. Um, but also by playing with those filtration rates, um, we can, we can probably meet things. Uh, but the fact that the, uh, it's indicating it's so early, um, we'll get to that, but it's a, it's a clue that you're going to want to start working on this.
So these are the various improvements that we're recommending, uh, a new well, uh, and, uh, another new well somewhere in at 800 to 1,000 gallons a minute. That's just what we know the aquifer will produce. So one new well, uh, then going below that, uh, another new tower. We're looking at a 1 million gallon capacity tower. Uh, that could switch a little bit. And then the next four items are all items out at the water treatment facility. So looking at, uh, a, a new aerator out there, uh, two new filters, uh, adding some high service pumping capabilities. And then just doing some other miscellaneous items in the plant, piping, uh, valves, uh, HVAC, uh, other items like that.
Would there need to be, there would need to be a building expansion?
There would be a building expansion that would house the filters. So that's part of why you need additional HVAC, uh, the piping, the valving. The building does not have the capacity for that, the aerators, I think we might have room for that. But detention, the filters, all that, we would need, uh, additional building space out there. And it's set up to be expanded. That plant was set up that way. And again, this is looking at, uh, what you get if you get a new well. And this is assuming 800 gallons a minute. Um, scenario one's on the left, scenario two, so it takes you out to 2023. Uh, that's assuming firm capacity and you can see your maximum, your total capacity with all the wells are running. Remember, firm is one well's out of service. Uh, so you take yourself out to 2033, so it gets you at least 10 years, if not more. And assume, and remember, Rich just mentioned this, the population trends that we have as we go out into the future might be a little more aggressive. We're going from the comp plan. So if you're less than that, then this timing would just move out to 2034, 2035, 2036, whatever it would be based on where those populations are. So this is, this is probably the worst case scenario that you're going to get 10 years, you know, have 10 years' capacity from this.
The purpose of this next series of charts is to give you an idea of what these improvements buy you for time before you have to do more.
Same thing with storage. Again, this takes us out to 2040. And again, the farther we go out and looking at some of those projections, they might be a little aggressive. I think that even likely may get pushed out later into 2040 sometime. Uh, this is water treatment, uh, facility capacity. Again, if we look at moving that capacity up into two and a half or three gallons a minute per square foot, so that's the top lines, the green or the red lines up there, uh, you're looking again out to 2040 and beyond. So we're looking, again, it's getting close to that 20-year design window that we're looking for when we look at improvements for, for, uh, water treatment facilities. So this is the one they brought me in for, so that you guys have beat me up and not anybody else on this one. Uh, so these are the costs for this. Uh, I've been here before, I've, I used to be taller, I've gotten beaten down over the years. Um, but, so a new well, 1.1 million, a new water tower, 5.75 million, and then $5 million for the water treatment facility improvement. So, uh, these are costs based on recent bids that we've seen for, uh, wells and water treatment or, uh, towers and water treatment facilities. Uh, you know, these are based on today's costs, our best information. Um, as you all know, prices are changing drastically all the time, but this is the best information we have at this point.
These are the, the water power numbers, not the AED numbers. This is just.
Oh, good. We probably should have had the AED in here for, for, for the mayor.
No, no, he's just getting nervous. I get to talk about how it gets paid for.
We believe their, um, the current water treatment plant has space for the expansion as well as potentially a new well on site. The one that there isn't space for, for various reasons, it's got water power.
Well, and plus what I was talking about, it really wants to be out towards the freeway, just from a pressure and distribution standpoint.
As well as your, your commercial industrial fires, you need a higher pressure for a longer duration generally than a residential fire. Um, everything's just closer together. You have possible other nasty things in there that make it worse. So you want to up your, your normal fire domain point, which would be C for residential area.
How much land is needed for a tower?
Minimum 300 feet.
Two acres or so?
Yeah.
Yeah, 300 by 300 roughly.
These numbers do include overhead, design fees, that type of thing?
Yep, yep.
So the only thing that's not included would be that bit of land you'd need for a tower. Are we done or were you going to show something?
No, I'll, I'll talk about the number side of it, if there's questions done on what you got to build part of it.
Oh, I don't know, I didn't put it together. I think it's close, schedule.
No, just the timing, just the timing here, that's all that's left. Um, for a new well, we're talking about starting now with the planning. So you would look at planning, design, we have agency approval. This has to go through, uh, the well, goes to the Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. They both work on those. Uh, and you have the construction and, and then operation. So this is starting now with design and, or planning and design, uh, summer of 2024. So that's when you could have the new well in service. Uh, next slide would be for the storage, I believe. Yep, for the new water tower, again, starting now with the, the planning and the design. Uh, planning now, design next spring, uh, agency approval. And then the construction on a water tower takes about two years, uh, has to be painted at some point. So that's a big, we only have about five months here in Minnesota where you can paint a water tower. So it's going to take a couple of seasons to get through that. So we'd have a tower online in about spring of 2026, uh, moving in, in with this schedule. And then the next one is for the water treatment facility. And again, we have a little more time with this one, trying to get something bring online in spring of 2028. So starting, uh, this in winter of 2023 through spring of 2024. So we got a little more time on this one. And then the design, again, agency approval. This goes through the Minnesota Department of Health for their review. Uh, we're looking about a year for construction and then operation in 2028.
We can talk more during discussion with Tom's input on what now means. Could be important.
And this is just your to-do list.
Yeah, I think this kind of just starts talking about site selection for the, uh, this will be for the tower and the well. Uh, we, the well can fit at the water treatment facility, but looking, citing for the tower. And then as you move into spring of 2023, design for the well, design for the tower. Summer is when we're submitting, uh, these items to the, the well, to the Department of Health. Fall, we're going to do the tower to Department of Health. Winter of 2023, that's when we're planning for the water treatment, uh, facility. And then see the design for the water treatment facility. And then you'd start construction of the well and the tower in 2024. I think that's it. A few items here, then just the summer of 2024 for the water facility and then starting construction in spring of 2025.
So my, um, thinking is that now would mean upon an application, so we know we have a bona fide user coming to town. It doesn't mean tomorrow. That jives with your understanding, Tom?
Any questions right now or you want to see the numbers?
I think we all want to see.
And, uh, just a little technicality for the new well. We're, we think it can go at the new water treatment facility over there, but we haven't done a complete site inspection yet. Um, every once in a while you come across a large bedrock or something that makes a well in the area not possible. Um, so just keep that kind of in the back of your mind, that we're not 100% sure that's where it can go, whether it's the seeds.
I think we're done.
Great. That was wonderful. Presentation has been.
Very well done.
Stalling numbers.
Now this is the really fun part, talking about numbers. What did you do, Rich?
Wasn't me.
Uh, forget that. Okay, a couple of things before we go into it again. This analysis was, is predicated upon the idea that we have one. upon the idea that we have one or more large industrial users that would be coming into the industrial park. Is that possible? Yes. We have had some discussions with users that would be large users. And so as we're going through this, we need to point out is we had to come up with some assumptions related to how much water they would use, how much sewer they would produce. And so these, again, it's a, it's a, it's a hypothetical at this point. So going forward, I do have to note that a lot of credit goes to Kelly, who spent hours doing all the grunt work on this, and Rich helping us understand how we needed to apply the, the construction site, so we know what cash flows can be to look like. So a couple of things. Before we could do anything, we had to update the utility fund models, which you guys are very familiar with. So we did all the normal updates that we would do for our rate analysis, that it would actually be coming in October, a little bit earlier. We had to update debt assumptions. We needed to look at operational expenses based on our most recent draft budget, and we needed to consider capital outlay for oversizing and system improvements. So in the past, or as you guys know, we pay for oversizing and system improvements. Permanent list stations is the city cost, not the developer. Oversizing a pipe for the to and through is the city's cost, not the developer. When you're talking smaller phases to residential subdivisions, you're usually talking tens of thousands of dollars. But one of the big game changes is Park I-35. If they build Park I-35, there's the potential for us to be looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars of cash outlay out of our reserves to be able to pay for those things. And so that's something that we start taking a look at within the financial model. So the development assumptions, and I wanted to go through this with the council. And if you want, we can go through it excruciating detail. But basically-
I'm looking at the magnifying glass.
Right. It's fairly big chart, but I can kind of walk through it a little bit. We've taken those existing developments that we have that are already plotted and already under construction. This lighter blue is actuals. Top number is new connections, so that equates to roughly a building permit. And newly plotted lots are the lots that are plotted in any given year. We've updated for actuals in 2021, and we readjusted expectations and developments based on where we are today and what we expect in those developments going forward. And then as we move further out, we start assuming other future phases of developments or other plats which might come in. So for instance, we're talking to August Ventures, that, the phases of that are considered in this assumption, in these assumptions, et cetera. Do you look-
Tom, I don't want to, I hate to interrupt you, but is there any way to make that brighter on there? I think that's on the projector.
Or send it to us, so we can look at our viewers.
I can't see it.
Yeah, I can't see it.
I can't. Good try to-
Kelly will go and snip this slide out of the presentation and email it to you guys, so you can actually pull it up.
That'd be awesome. That'd be great. Yeah, thank you.
So I'll continue to talk how it's generally read while she keeps giving it to me, so I can actually read it. So if you look at the bottom, this kind of sums up what we're actually predicting for new connections and total new plotted lots. This is what we did in 2021, it was 66 new connections, competing new plotted lots. As you go out for new connections or new homes or their equivalents in the future, you're looking at 31, 55, 55, 55, 31, 31, 26, 11, 14. One of the things that you'll notice in our models, it gets more conservative as you go out into the future. And although our mod, overall model goes out through 2034, we really only use it most times for the near five-year horizon, because as you get going much further out, it starts to become a little fuzzy. For the purpose of the system, loss and improvements, we're talking about with that BMI presented, we are applying the model, but you need to keep in mind that as you move further out, things get a little fuzzier. So when you start looking at lines or numbers way out, it, it does get a little worse. And we'll talk about how to maybe attribute that as you move forward. We'll come back to this.
Can I, can I ask a dumb question?
Yep.
Did we not just lower our, to 25 for our development of new homes? Wouldn't that change that number then too?
These serve two different purposes. You're, you're looking at it from a budget standpoint for what you should be expecting for building permit revenue. These are getting to projections related to demand on the system and revenues related to water and sewer. So-
So they don't-
They don't have to match, because conservative in one is not necessarily conservative-
Okay.
-in, in the other. It's a good point, but they also function differently. Your budget relates to a 12-month period. And at the end of the day, either you hit it or you don't, and either make it or you don't. When you're looking at modeling for utility funds, you're looking at trends over a longer period of time. So you're looking, are things going this way? Are they going this way? Are they going here? Because the reality is, as we know, that development might come this year, it might come next year. They might be a little, they might build up faster than they think they do, or they may not build out as fast. And so we're really looking at trends on a larger, a little bit larger scale. So we went through and we wanted to make the financial analysis match as closely as we could the scenarios that were laid out in BMI's scenarios. So we have what we would call a scenario one, which is where you have a new user come online in September of '23 with a first phase, and then you have a phase two, which could either be an expansion of that user or another user of similar demand and usage. Scenario two is assuming that that second phase or second user is a little bit further out. It's not right on the heels of the first one. And then scenario three, which they didn't present, but we felt we need to present it for financial purposes, is what if you only have that one big user that comes in? What does it mean at that point? Because you don't, because that starts getting into long-term cash revenues of that second phase. And you'll see why that makes a difference when we get into it. So one thing you'll note from previously, some of these lines will look a little fatter. Because the dollars we are talking about have grown so much, potentially in these models, we used to use a $2 million fund balance as the top end in water. It's now 4 million. And you'll see why we need to do that as we move out into the future with some of the modeling. So water, if this would, if we had it in the same range that we had in the past, this line would be up here. Is everybody following that? Okay. So taking a look at the, this is the base scenario. So this is our utility fund model with all of those updates that I just talked about. What it's showing is that in the water fund, we, well, hang on a second, there we go. In the water fund, we are seeing that our fund balance is staying above the minimum balance that's required through our PFA loan. It's also staying above the minimum fund balance that we've identified based on policy. And we are seeing a general upwards trend in the reserve balance. Now, as we talked about before, you want to take a look at a general upward trend for a couple of reasons. Remember, we're collecting fees and trunk fees and connection fees to be able to pay cash for things in the future if we can. Plus, there are things that we just can't predict in the model. So that upward trend shows growth in reserves to be able to pay for those things going forward. In the sewer fund, you're also seeing a similar trend. It shows that by 2020, before 2025, we will get above the minimum reserve balances. You know, the sewer fund is probably our fund that has the weakest financial position, but it shows that it will continue to grow into the future. So overall, I would say that what we're showing here is consistent with where we expect it to be and where we expect to be going out into the future. Is everybody following on that? Okay. Now, we start applying the various scenarios. So let's take a look at scenario one assumptions. In scenario one, this assumes the phase one and phase two, first user, second user are back to back. You're assuming something that would have an equivalent 1,500 base fees, which would be roughly equivalent to the size of our system today. So you'd be looking at roughly doubling the number of equivalent house units for purposes of what they would be paying for base fees in their, on their utility bill. They would be using $425,000 gallons per day. That's the number we use for purposes of the model. On the sewer side, a lot of times, and when you have large users like this, they use a lot of water, but it usually gets used up in the process or goes out the door on a product. And so the actual sewer is less. For purposes of the model, we assumed it would be 85,000 gallons per day, and they'd be equivalent to 310 REUs or 310 base fees that would be paid on a monthly basis. With phase two, you're basically doubling everything we presented up above. The other thing we needed to do is we need to increase operational expenses associated with our water production. You're using more chemical, you're using more energy to run the plant. Some of those costs are going to increase. I will be perfectly honest, we don't know exactly what the cost is, so that is a best sway from Corey saying, if we're using double, that's going to double. And if we're, if we're producing double, that might double. But we won't actually know until the plant actually starts to go online and we get into design. Seth's crew can give us a little bit better estimates, but at this point, it's a plug-in.
How many base fees do we collect right now for water?
Around 1,500.
So, okay.
So one of the things that, and I, I think I know where you guys might be going, we know that when we're looking at the financial health of our utility funds, base fees have a much, much stronger impact than usage. And you will see that when we get into the sensitivity testing. So scenario one, what you see in scenario one with regards to water is that we continue on the same general trend, but the debt and the usage fees kind of come online about the same time, and we see a very strong increase in that line. So that means we have a great deal more capacity here. What does that capacity mean? It means that we have the ability to control rates as we go into the future, handle other oversizing and system costs that might come up that we don't have identified at this particular time. And it means that we have the ability to control our rates and possibly adjust them in the future. I do not, absolutely do not want to make that promise, but we have a much greater ability to do it. On the sewer side, we're really not looking at the same large capital investments. So any revenues, to a large degree, just more revenue. One thing we do need to point out in all the models is that our balance drops significantly. If, we'll take a dip when Park I-35 gets built because of our participation, whether it's here or out here, it'll happen at some point in time. So for purposes of the model, since that infrastructure has to be there for any large user, we plugged it in, which shows that we will basically empty the bank. But then with a large user buying that kind of, or paying for that volume of treatment, we will quickly recover reserves within the sewer fund. And it will have a much more positive impact than it does in the water fund, because you don't have the same type of capital improvements. Is everybody following? Okay. I will tell you, this is the most positive scenario. What it really comes back to is the base fees. In this scenario, you have, you're tripling our base fees in a few-year period going forward. So under any scenario, the more large user we have come on, the better for the system, long and short. Sensitivity testing. So what do I mean by sensitivity testing? What if we build it and they come, but they don't buy what they say they're going to buy? They don't rig, they, their production facility isn't selling as much. They don't use as much. They all of a sudden find a new process that uses less water and less sewer, produces less sewer, whatever it is. We build it, but they don't use as much. So when we say sensitivity testing, it's what percentage of base fees and usage could we get to where we don't cross the minimums and we're still seeing some sort of upward trend? It's 50%. Now here, you're saying, Tom, it's flat. Yep, but when that second phase comes on, you get out of here, it starts to crawl up when you start getting further out. But it's a little bit touch and go right here. Sewer, on all of these, I'll just tell you right now, so we don't have to cover it every time, sewer's okay either way, because you're getting more revenue and you're not having the capital expenses. So I won't talk about sewer anymore through the rest of the presentation. So what if we go with scenario two, where that second user or second phase comes, you know, a few years later? So here, again, we're talking about the 1,500 ERUs, it doubles in the second phase, but the space or the timing of it is a little bit further apart. Okay, it's good. We're moving in a positive direction. You notice this flattens out here. As soon as the revenues start coming on, it takes up again and follows a similar trend. So it's positive. The fund is moving, is supporting all of that infrastructure, those capital investments, and the fund is, is, the projected fund balance is moving in the direction that we would like it to, which again, gives us contingency in case something bad happens, provides for currently unplanned for capital projects like oversizing, system improvements, et cetera, and provides us the ability to control rates going into the future. Because remember, even if we don't have this user, we're going to have to build that stuff in the future. And I'll talk about that at the end. Scenario two, sensitivity testing. Coincidentally, it's 50%. Then again, we see this little dip, but once it comes online, things start to level out. And as we go out into the future, we start getting more revenues, it recovers, and we, we take off into the future. Scenario three. Okay, so what if we only see the one big user? We know what happens when we have that second big, that second big user, that volume of base fees has huge positive financial implications for the fund. It's still good. Now, if we do sensitivity testing on it, it's, guess what? It's about 50%. Yes, Rich?
Did you include revenues for a plant expansion for scenario three? Because if you know enough in advance, you probably wouldn't do it. And that's a huge-
So this scenario only includes the expansion of this, and any plant expansion at that point is off the chart, because at that point-
So this would only reflect a well and tower?
This only reflects the well and tower within the scope of this. We did include it in the scenario. It still covers a plant expansion out into the future, but at that point, that plant expansion is out beyond-
Yep, okay.
It's beyond 2030.
I just, I want to jump on to a question.
Yep.
I'm kind of getting lost in all this. Are you, overall, are you looking for some direction from us for-
This is for, this is for informational purposes. Yep, because at some point, if we have a large user, we're going to be, we, we, if we're, if we're going to permit them, if they're coming to the city, we need to decide if we can serve them, and can we do it? And they will eat up capacity. And the idea is that means it's going to accelerate improvements, and it's going to be cost. So we just, this is informational, can we do it financially? Okay, so I'm going to go back to what happens long-term on the base scenario. We did plug in numbers, but as you saw from Seth's presentation, we're getting out to the, we're off the chart, but we're also at the end of the table that we already have in the model, because it's so far out. But what it seems to indicate is everything is right there. You just cover it, you're just right there. All the planning that we've done, all kinds of, all kind of lines up, but a little bit one way or the other can push you this way or that way. Long and short, no big user, we're in the exact same position that we are today. About the time, we need to start looking at additional improvements. The debt for the existing plant drops off, but oh, guess what? It's going to be backfilled with other stuff that we need to put on the system. You're just kind of maintaining into the future. So at the end of the day, what can you really take away from all of this? Significant, if we have a significant industrial user, based on the assumptions, there would be sufficient revenue from utility-based and usage fees to cash flow the debt service for the capacity improvements, based on those assumptions. A significant user would improve the long-term financial health of the utility funds and help mitigate certain inherent risks that we have today. Once you build it, if it don't come, you have to cash flow it, right? But if you have somebody that's infusing a lot of cash on a regular basis, that helps mitigate that potential risk. Last one is, there is risk of capacity improvements for main significant user does not come, what I just talked about. No significant user, we're really where we are today. When we predict, and again, it starts getting fuzzy out there, but it's basically, it's just kind of hold the course. You have the risk that if you build it at the time, that you have to build these additional improvements if you're not seeing the projected growth. Negative financial impact. If you see more than the growth you projected, great, then you move to the positive side. Having a large user really helps buffer those risks. It doesn't completely eliminate them, but it significantly uppers them from what they would normally be.
It seems to me it does create a flipside risk, which I think is very low, that a user comes, you build these improvements, and the user goes away.
Yes.
So that's something you want to keep in back of your mind, is a possibility, although I think it's probably low.
Thanks for that positive.
Well, you know, I just-
Doesn't make you more attractive to a potential new significant user, because you already have the capacity built.
That's true.
They come online very fast.
Good backfill.
I've seen it happen. Granted, that was with Amazon, so different situation, but if, once you have it, it happens.
At least we got some positivity there.
Stealing my doom and gloom.
So that's the presentation. I like numbers. Kelly likes numbers.
Jesus.
You guys have to deal with, but this is the end. So at this point, if there are questions?
Thank you. Let's move on to the parks report.
Yep, you have a presentation.
You're free to go.
You're free to go.
There we go. Okay. So I also like numbers. My graph is, presentation is rather short. But, so the, the city council in, in June, I came and presented about the farmers market and what it would take if the city wanted to have a city-run farmers market and what were the essential elements that needed to be there. The council asked me to do a rough analysis of the costs that it would take to get up and running and maybe the, also the farmers. So my research, there is the Minnesota Farmers Market Association, the Minnesota Recreational Association, so people like me, city-run farmers market Facebook group, and then talking and interviewing local market managers. So this is the best guess. These are rough numbers that could be, you know, higher or lower, but this is, this is kind of a rough of what we're looking at. So the first year, the first year, so the middle column, there's going to be a little bit more cost than there would be in further years. So the, so for a market manager, 20 hours a week, $25 an hour, it would be close to $13,000 a year with salary and benefits included. Then advertisement, first year, we probably need to be making, you know, have signs made and those types of things, so about $500. In the future, we probably wouldn't need, you know, we'd already have our signs, so that, that could drop a little bit there. The farmers market, they really encourage you to have that, that general liability insurance. And so that comes along with that membership to the Minnesota Farmers Market Association, so they can offer that for us. And then there's some incidental things like cones. We have a tent, we have some tables, we have some chairs, but we would need some cones. So those are the, you know, the meat of the necessary items. That was a total of $13,596. Okay, so this is without the food access programs or entertainment or other pieces. So then I looked at the food access programs because I know that you were interested in that possibly being a piece. If we had a food access program, so we're talking about EBT SNAP and the POP program where the kids come and you give them a token and they get $2 and they go and turn in their, their tokens. So for cashier, $2,500, that would be a one day a week, eight hours, just during the market season, where the market manager would be five and a half months. And then we would need to pay for the POS system to run the cards. There are grants out there, so it would cover probably $300 of the expense. In addition to the system itself, there's a, there is a $191 charge from the company in order to run those and process those transactions. Then we would need some internet. So depending on where we're at, you know, we would need a phone, we'd need some hotspot, some internet, those types of things to be able to run the system. When you run the EBT cards, then you give the, you give out either a script or you give out tokens. So a lot of farmers markets will use the wood coins, like the nickel coins. So we would need to, you know, create some custom coins that couldn't be duplicated. If we decided to do the POP program, unlike the EBT program, the EBT program, we're just running the transaction. So that's the cost to us. The money is coming, you know, from the EBT SNAP fund. The POP is a direct cost. Anything we put in, $2 a kid, it would go to the kid they would take to the vendor. So there is, there is no grants or anything for, for that. So just estimating if we wanted to do, you know, 25 kids a, a week during the farmers market, about $1,000 to, to fund that. So total with the food access program, so the food access program would be about $4,800 for the first year and then about $4,000 for the following years. So that would bring the estimated total to $18,412 for the first year and $17,122 for the following years. One of the pieces that I had talked about in my June presentation was that entertainment is one of those things that draws people in. And so that's a piece that it could be somebody volunteering and they put the hat out, you know, and they're playing the violin or they're singing. But a lot of times, you know, there's only so many people that have that musical talent that want to volunteer their time. So most likely, you would be, end up, you know, hiring somebody, a musician, comedian, some kind of an event. So I just averaged that at $300, which is kind of the average of what we're doing for the family fun nights. So if we did an event each week, it could add up to $6,000 on top of the cost. All right, revenue. So looking at revenue, I'm just taking the average cost from all of the different places that I had researched. And most people have a 10-by-10 foot stall. And then we're looking at eight to 10 vendors, really is the minimum. You have to have certain categories, you know, meat and fruits and vegetables, those flowers. But eight to 10 would be kind of the, the ideal of what we would look for, for that starting year. And for the, so vendors are charged, in a smaller community, $20 to $30, you know, a week. In larger communities, they can get about $50 per stall per week. And then in order to get them to take the full season, then of course, there's a discount. So in communities like ours, vendors are charged between $225 and $325 for the season. And then some communities have access to electricity, so they'll charge $25, $50 for that, that access to the electricity. So looking at that, looking at eight to 10 seasonal vendors, we're looking at about $2,000 to $2,500 in revenue. So overall, in conclusion, a city-run farmers market is not a money-making venture.
That's a pretty good conclusion.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Thank you.
So the council-
So, all right, so at this point, we had talked about, do we want to have the city fund the farmers market? Does anybody want to do that? I'm on the no camp. Bryce is shaking his head.
No.
Amanda, you're up, though.
I don't want the city to fund the farmers market. I just want a farmers market.
I'm just defeated.
And that's all. No, I'm, I'm, I'm on the same boat here today.
Discussion, make counsel. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, just make my voice on favor.
Hi.
Hi.